I call the December 2, 2025 Board of Education Meeting Order. Before we approve the agenda, I make a recommendation to the board that we remove item I, Amendment to Contract to Audit Accounts, as that would never, we would not need an extension anymore, as the auditors have gotten what they need from the IRS.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda as recommended by meeting number I.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Any discussion? Any opposed? Passes. All right, Ms. Watson, will you please give us the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, God, and Almighty God, we pray for our students and our staff. And let us just remember what this season is all about, the birth of Jesus. I pray that our students and our staff are having a new Christmas and happy new year. I pray, dear Heavenly Father, that you lead us where we need to go. My assistance, my name, my name.
Amen.
Next item of business, the nominations are now open for chairperson of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education. Do I have any nominations?
Dr. Dennis?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Glenda Gibson for chair.
Glenda Gibson has been nominated as chairperson. Are there any further nominations?
Dr. Dennis, I have a nomination for Carla Poplin for chair.
Thank you. Carla Poplin has been nominated as chairperson. Do I have any further nominations? I have a motion to close nominations by Mr. Sorensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Whitaker. All in favor? Any opposed? We will vote on ballot. You have a ballot in front of you, and Ms. Hope Miller-Dry will pass down an envelope. Please put them in envelopes, and the board attorney, Mr. Mark Louder, will tally the results.
Congratulations, Ms. Glenda Gibson.
Nominations are now open for vice chairperson of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education. Do I have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Mr. Bill Sorensen for vice chair.
Bill Sorensen has been nominated as vice chairperson. Are there any further nominations?
Dr. Dennis, I would like to nominate Robin Whitaker for vice chair, please.
Robin Whitaker has been nominated as vice chairperson. Are there any further nominations? There are no further nominations, or have I motion to close nominations?
Make a motion to close nominations.
Motion by Ms. Poplin, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Whitaker. All in favor? Any opposed? Please use the same process as before for vice chairperson of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education.
Congratulations, Ms. Robin Whitaker.
Thank you, Dr. Dennis. And congratulations, Ms. Whitaker. Next on the agenda is recognitions. I'm going to turn this over to you, Dr. Dennis, and Ms. Hedrick.
Good evening. As a reminder, each month, Stanley County Schools proudly recognizes exceptional certified and classified staff and employees as Stanley Stars. This month, we would like to honor the following individuals. May I please have Victoria Engel, kindergarten teacher from East Albemarle, join us up front? Ms. Engel is a first-year kindergarten teacher who brings positivity, professionalism, and a calm presence to her classroom every day. She collaborates well with her team and approaches challenges with a "what can we do?" attitude, never resorting to complaint. Her classroom is structured, nurturing, and well-managed, and her instructional delivery reflects a strong understanding of early childhood learning. You would never guess that this is her first year of teaching. She carries herself with a confidence in skill and genuine care for her students. We are so excited to have Ms. Engel as part of the bullpup family. Please give her a round of applause. Next, I would like to invite Katie Green, school counselor at North Stanley Middle School, to the front. Katie Green is North Stanley Middle School's school counselor and this month's certified Stanley Star. Ms. Green has been a vital part of North Stanley Middle School since it was New London Choice many years ago. She is a trusted leader in the school, working with students, staff, and parents on a daily basis to support individual student needs. She views every student as a whole child. She also sponsors the Students Against Violence Everywhere Club, which was recognized as one of the top Save Promise Clubs for the '24-'25 school year. Along with her counseling leadership, Ms. Green also mentors a beginning counselor at one of our elementary schools and participates in targeted professional development to enhance our school counseling program. North Stanley Middle School is a better place with Ms. Katie Green as counselor. Please give her a round of applause. And last, but certainly not least, I would like to invite Marlette Godwin, data manager at North Stanley Middle School. Marlette is North Stanley Middle School's data manager and this month's classified Stanley Star. Ms. Godwin has been serving North Stanley Middle School since it was Kendall Valley over 12 years in total. She not only manages a high flow of student information and data, she also helps teachers stay on timelines and access vital details that they need. As a member of the leadership team, Ms. Godwin provides detailed insight into data trends to help the team make MTSS decisions. At the beginning of the '25-'26 school year, she also took on a secondary role as the school's ISS coordinator and secretary while a coworker was out. She greeted students, staff, and families with a smile and a wealth of information, and we are thankful to have her at North Stanley Middle School. Please give her a round of applause. And this evening, I would like to recognize in absentia three staff members. We are entering a busy season, and they were not able to join us. They will get their write-ups via email, but Sandy Brown, eighth-grade science teacher at Albemarle Middle; Dolores Gregory, custodian at Albemarle Middle; and Nia Liverman, teacher assistant at East Albemarle. Please give them a round of applause.
Thank you, and congratulations again to our Stanley Stars. I would like to call Ms. Elise Carrick up front, please. Hello, Ms. Carrick. So Ms. Elise Carrick is one of only eight teachers across North Carolina chosen to design a lesson plan that integrate the big ideas of artificial intelligence into early literacy instruction. The fellowship's mission is to teach young learners about AI concepts through literacy standards, all in an unplugged, age-appropriate way. As an AI BY8 fellow, Ms. Carrick collaborated in virtual professional learning communities with educators across the state to share insights, refine instructional strategies, and co-develop engaging AI-integrated literacy lessons for K-2 students. These lessons align with North Carolina's K-2 English Language Arts Standards while introducing students to key AI ideas that encourage curiosity, creativity, and critical thinking. Ms. Carrick also played an instrumental role in helping this curriculum gain approval and publication, showcasing her leadership, innovation, and dedication to preparing young learners for a technology-driven world. Let's give Ms. Carrick a round of applause.
Thank you.
Looks like the board's going to want to shake your hand. Last, but certainly not least, I want to invite Ms. Kennedy Baker to the podium. So Ms. Kennedy Baker from South Stanley High School is the first Stanley County Women's Cross Country State Champion and only second overall in Champions history. And so you run a 5K, right, Ms. Baker? And how fast did you run that 5K?
For the state champion?
Yes, ma'am.
I think it was like 18, 20.
18, 20. I can't run a 1K in 18, 20. That's very impressive. And I see Ms. Baker, I guess you live around Oakboro, because I see you running around there all the time, and she's always running, she's always training. It is very well deserved, and congratulations, that's a great accomplishment. We will as soon as you're done. Both your parents and your coach? Can I invite the parents and the coach to come up for a picture opportunity, please? Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Our board really wants to extend to all of you again, congratulations on your outstanding achievements, your recognitions tonight. I hope you know how proud we are of you, and we thank you so very much. Elise, I told you that I was not going to put you on the spot. Look at her, she's got her head up. Please don't. I just wanted to say this. I know that some of us attended the school board conference in Greensboro just recently. There was a really, really great speaker that we had that talked about AI and the future, and the future in what we do in our schools, as well as the future overall with AI. So I am intrigued, and I think the other board members probably are too, very intrigued with the lessons that you will be designing and engaging students in. We would love to come out, Elise and Mr. Gray, to like visit sometime. Please, please invite us with something that you might have going on in class, because we, it's here, AI is here, and we love to see how it's going to be incorporated into the schools. So thank you. What a great honor. Next up on the agenda is closed session. For personnel matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Section A 6. Student matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Section A 1. Attorney-client matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, A 3. May I have a motion to enter into closed session at this time?
I move to go into closed session.
A motion by Mr. List, a second. Second by Ms. Whitaker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. We are now in closed session.
...
At this time, I would like to call the board back into open session. Next on the agenda is public participation at board meetings. In accordance with policy 2310, public participation at board meetings each month, part of at least one regularly scheduled board meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. However, the public comment session will not exceed 15 minutes total except by the majority of the vote of the board. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. You will be notified when your three minutes have expired. I kindly ask that you be respectful of all that are in attendance at our board meeting this evening. We have one speaker, Ms. Hannah Lear. Welcome Hannah.
Hi. I just wanted to come to you all for an update on the needs-based grant. I believe you guys were supposed to get a update in November, so didn't know if you guys had an update for the community or if that money was just spent to mostly for no reason.
Thank you. We now move to the consent agenda. Board members, you have had the opportunity to read over the minutes from the November 4th special called meeting and November 4th
At this time, I would like to call the board back into open session. Next on the agenda is public participation at board meetings. In accordance with Policy 2310, public participation at board meetings each month, part of at least one regularly scheduled board meeting, will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. However, the public comment session will not exceed 15 minutes total, except by the majority of the vote of the board. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board, except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. You will be notified when your three minutes have expired. I kindly ask that you be respectful of all that are in attendance at our board meeting this evening. We have one speaker, Ms. Hannah Lear. Welcome Hannah.
Hi. I just wanted to come to you all for an update on the Needs-Based Grant. I believe you guys were supposed to get a update in November, so didn't know if you guys had an update for the community, or if that money was just spent to mostly for no reason.
Thank you. We now move to the consent agenda. Board members, you have had the opportunity to read over the minutes from the November 4th special called meeting and November 4th regular called meeting. If there are no changes to these minutes, may I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. List. A second.
Second.
By Ms. Whitaker. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Thank you. The consent agenda has been approved. Committee reports are next. First is Finance Committee, Mr. Dustin List. I think you're presenting the budget resolution.
Yes, I'll certainly allow Mr. Dudley to do that. We did meet on November 24th, briefly discussed, had a presentation from a company called Digital Designs. More information to come on that to help the Finance Department with payment to vendors that helps reduce some costs and streamline some things. They're going to run an analysis for us and get some numbers back, so more information to come on that. Additionally, we went into the budget resolution. You guys are familiar with that. State money's come in. It's a way for us to reconcile the budget. I'll allow Mr. Dudley to present that, but before we do, because there was a motion for approval out of committee, we did talk about the federal cuts. I think it's Title I through Title IV coming in '26, '27, estimated around $500,000 to the local. That's a federal cut that if we choose to keep some of these, like Title I, for example, has, I think, 50 teachers in it, so we'll have to figure out.
Fifty staff members.
Fifty staff members. How we're going to utilize local dollars, or what is eliminated. So, again, more information to come out of that. We talked about child nutrition services, and its first three months being in the red, and some possible solutions to that moving forward. And that was pretty much it, outside of... Mr. Dudley, do you want to present that resolution?
I can.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, you should have it in your packet. Page one, you'll see there's Section 1 and 2 is your state public school fund. Section 1 is the actual expenses part of that. Currently, the budget resolution is at $70,216,873. And you'll see on Section 2 how the revenue will come in at for that will be your main of it is $69,792.18. Then, of course, the school technology funds, that's state, and then, of course, state textbooks allotment. Section 3 and Section 4 is your local current expense fund. Section 3 is your actual expenditure side of the local current expense. That's the funding that comes from the capital, from the county commissioners. You'll see that that's $18,199,447. And Section 4 is how the revenue of that will be imbalanced at that point, with the local current expense fund from the county commissioners being $13,161,505. Fines and forfeitures is the estimate, and that's based on the previous year, is what we received for fines and forfeitures. State sales tax is also at the estimate. That's the amount of the refund that we would get annually. That is the portion for local accounts. The interest earned is on our checking account and our STIF account and our CD that we have. Article 44 sales tax and Article 46, the quarter cent sales tax, which is allocated to us through local current expense from the county commissioners. And then, of course, the classified staff bonus that was given this year and the actual teacher supplement grant that was given. You'll see all those line items there. Page 2 is, excuse me, is your federal grants funds. Section 5 and Section 6. Section 5 is the expenditure side. You know that this is the first year now, outside of the... Well, there's three months of that is COVID funds. The... Or what was remaining of the COVID funds is in this. And that will come, I'm so sorry, that will come to you as a budget amendment, based on the carryover of those funds. So that is not listed here on this budget resolution that we had to spend by September 30th. These are actually the base federal funds that we are allocated every year. And you'll see those line items, and that's $7,493,976. Next page, 6 and 7 and 8 and 9 and 10. Section 7 and 8 is your child nutrition fund. That is based on the estimate of what we calculated and we got received in the '24, ' '25 school year. And you'll see how that's broken down, majority of that being federal funds from USDA reimbursements. Section 9 and Section 10 is capital outlay fund. You'll see that that's roughly about $4,257,712, with majority of that coming from county commissioners at 3.2 and $800,000 for the Indy driveway project. Page 4 is your special revenue fund, which is your Fund 8, Section 11 and Section 12. There's not much that we have there, other than your ROTC funding, your Medicaid funding, and then some small grants that we get throughout the year. That is pretty much from the school level, reimbursable back to the school for those items, and that's $1338,188. And of course, on the last page, Section 13 and 14 and 15 just talks about what the duties are of budget amendments and what percentages that the board allows that there be transferred, which I bring all budget amendments to y'all, no matter what the percentage is, because I feel like y'all need to be aware of that. So that's just the verbiage relating to what is required by law and by the local government commission that we have to put in our budget resolution. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Dudley or Mr. List? I know that I, when we had the Finance Committee meeting, kind of referenced to my concern to you about not having a state budget passed yet with our funding, whether that's even state funds, federal funds, and we're just waiting?
Yes ma'am. You know, pretty much your general assembly has gone home for the holidays, so no action has occurred concerning the passing of the budget. All we've got currently right now is just called what they call the mini-bills. The mini-bills that they are referencing and the budget jargon is pretty much was relating to salary step increases for staff or for teachers, no increases for certified or for classified staff or any of your central office administration or anything of that sort. So that was pretty much what was covered in the mini-bills. Currently, yes, we do not have an official state budget, and this is the first year of the biannual. So there are some concerns out there that if we don't even get a budget passed this year, how are they going to create a second year of a biannual budget, when you don't even have the first year? So I do know that that's talk across the state, so we'll just see what happens when they come back. I think they come back sometime mid-January.
It's concerning to me, I think it's out of what is the Title I, that we have 50-some
We have roughly about 50 staff members that's paid out of Title I.
That's paid out of Title I.
Just for reference, back in July, we were told that we would not be funded Title II, Title III, and Title IV funding for the '25, '26 school year. That was roughly about half a million dollars that Stanley County Schools would have lost for the '25, '26 school year. We do, we did have carryover in those funds, so we were already talking about what we were going to do. So just to let you know how that works, federal funding that we get for this school year was approved by last October. So the legislation had to get in place. There, I think, there was actually some lawsuits that was filed on the federal level, as well as the state levels across the United States toward the federal government. And so they reinstated those funds with the knowing that this would be the last year for those three funds. There was talk and discussion about how Title I would be affected from the state level across the United States, and that, you know, there would probably be cuts coming to that. Now, roughly, if we look at a cut to Title I, we're almost at $3 million, $2.9 million in Title I is what we received this year. So that would be detrimental to Stanley County if we lose Title I funding. Currently, that's roughly about 50 positions. We currently in Title II, Title III, and Title IV, we have about five positions that we fund out of those. So there's concerns there as well for those individuals or those positions.
Thank you. Are there other questions that the board has? Any other questions?
I think Mr. Dudley just need a...
Yes, I'm going to get...
Yeah, this will be approved.
Okay. So could I have a motion to approve the budget resolution for the school year 2025-26 as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. List. A second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Whitaker. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose no. The budget resolution for the school year 2025-26 has been approved. Thank you to the Finance Committee, as well as Mr. Dudley, your department. I see some in your department, as well as Dr. Dennis. Thank you. Personnel Committee, Ms. Poplin?
Yes. Personnel Committee met on November 7th, 2025, at 11:30 a.m. We met to discuss and get the list for the qualified observer for this year. That list is on your computer, and I will need a motion to approve that towards the end. We did have a short closed session at that meeting, and then also discussed was some bus driver coordinator training and training related to bus driver hiring process. And I just want to reiterate that I appreciate Ms. Hedrick getting that, so that we can get a smoother transition with our bus department and drivers hired as quickly and efficiently as possible. So I do appreciate her getting on that for us. But I will need a motion to approve the qualified observer list.
Thank you. So at this time, can I have a motion to approve the qualified observers for 2025-2026 school year?
I guess we just need a second, since it's coming out of committee.
I need a second.
Actually, sorry.
Okay. By Mr. Sorenson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Okay, this qualified observer list has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. Next is policy. Ms. Alman?
Yeah, our committee met on November 7th. There are some policies that we need to vote on tonight. Let me pull these up. So this one is approval on the first read, actually, is going to be 4150, school assignment. There were some areas that the board sent back to the committee. If the rest of the board would like to look over those, and if they have any questions, we can have discussion.
So I think the policy that, for approval tonight, on the first read, is Policy 4150, school assignment, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I think all of us have had a chance to look at that policy. So can I have, this is coming out of committee, so can I have a second?
I'll second for approval on first read.
Any discussion or comments?
I'd like to comment. A concern I have, I'm on the policy committee, so I shouldn't have a concern this late in the game, but one of the functions of old age is you can't remember what you remember. I could have swore when we talked about this, there was mention to the Southeast Compact, Articles 3 and 29 of North Carolina General Statute 115(c) specify that we have to do, where we are mandated to go above and beyond to accommodate active-duty military people for all kinds of things. If you read the actual legislation, let me pull up the number. It's pretty, it's pretty involved. It's GS 115(c)-407.5. Given things that went down just this past week, I feel it's imperative that we codify in our policies to ensure that we meet that compact. I'm not sure that, I don't see anything in the policy that even mentions it. You know, we're talking about what happened in Washington, D.C. We have several families in Stanley County that have kids in our schools that are actively deployed, so I have concerns with that. I don't know if I, I could have swore I saw that it was mentioned in the legislative part before, but I don't see it now.
Was this, was it this policy, Mr. Sorenson, the 4150, or was that in another policy that's being tabled?
Under Part 6 of Section B, it actually states superintendent or designated, it should administratively assign a student to a school other than the one, and one of the reasons is when required by law.
I think my concern is that, I'd like to see that actually spelled out, but we're fine, I'm fine with the policy, I'm just expressing a concern I have.
Okay. Okay. So you are fine, Mr. Sorenson, with making that comment and the fact of how the policy then is written that we need to approve?
I like those comments in the...
Okay. And hope you have that.
And Dr. Dennis, is that something that could be under procedure, under 6, or is that...
You have a couple things. You have federal and state, you know, guidelines and, you know, policies, general statutes, whatever you want to call them, dictate a lot of that, too, and they would always supersede anything if maybe we didn't have some quite. But we can always work and look at our languages and make sure they're aligned and get that. The reason we need this policy now is because transfer window's opening.
Right.
So we will definitely deal with that in accordance with state and federal statutes.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because I was in agreement with Mr. Sorenson during the meeting on that part.
There is a policy, 4050, that's a military policy.
Yes.
Any other comments or discussion?
Which schools is it that we currently have? Do we have a list of that? Because I'm assuming we're using month-to-numbers?
Yeah, you are. I pulled that out because I had it at the meeting, but I can remember. It will be Stanfield, make sure I'm just writing them out so I don't remember. Be Locust. It'll be West Stanley Middle School. And I need to recheck the numbers on West Stanley High School. West Stanley High School.
And Indy is...
But I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure they're going to be there, too. And I know those, I know those four for definite, because those are part of the conversation. But again, I'll need to go back and, and I apologize, Mr. List, I had that in my stuff for the meeting, except I put it somewhere else. But I'll get you a comprehensive list when I get back in the office.
That's fine. I was just stating it for the public record.
Yeah.
That said, a list of these schools will be provided.
Because we're going to rerun all the numbers right before we put anything down.
And the transfer, the transfer window policy did start, did open today, correct?
We're waiting on the policy, so it's going to open...
December 8th.
8th.
It opens December 8th? I'm not sure that's what's on our website.
We did not update the website. We were waiting for this. So what's on the website was for last year.
Okay, so is that going to be updated then after this meeting to be...
We're going to update it tomorrow.
December 8th, then?
December 8th. Monday, we'll open the scribbled portal.
Okay. Well, some of us, I think, sometimes we get asked about the transfer window.
Those with expiring transfers will receive a message from Derek Bush. It'll be an automated message. We'll send that out, and it's also going to be put on session media.
Okay. All right, thank you. Well, this is coming out of committee, so do I have a second?
I already seconded it.
You seconded it?
I did.
Ms. Poplin? Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Okay, Policy 4150 has been approved.
So policies to be tabled for 30 days is going to be Policy 2302, and that's remote participation in board meetings. Policy 2310, public participation at board meetings. Policy 7520, family and medical leave. Policy 9305 is mascot in school colors. And then a new administrative regulation. Just has a number right now, 3320AR is what it's going to be called, and that's student overnight travel lodging procedures. And that's going to be tabled for 30 days. The, a lot of these policies were sent back to the board, and there was really no change. So now it... So now it can sit for 30 days.
Since they're coming out of committee, I will second those to be tabled for 30 days.
Any other questions about the policies being tabled? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Okay, this has passed for the policies to be tabled for 30 days. Thank you, Ms. Almond. Is that it?
I believe so.
Okay, we have amended the agenda, so we're not doing the auxiliary services. Nothing else coming from auxiliary services, right? Next is personnel and administration, Ms. Lydia Hedrick.
Good evening, Board. Before you, you do have the December 2nd personnel agenda. Section 1 requires no action, it is simply for your information, but Section 2 does require a vote. So tonight, I respectfully request your approval of Section 2 of the personnel report.
Okay, Board members, may I have a motion to approve Section 2 of the personnel agenda report as presented? Okay, a motion or moved by Mr. Sorenson, a second. Second by Ms. Watson. All in favor say aye. Oppose no. Section 2 of the personnel agenda has been approved.
Thank you, Ms. Hedrick.
Next, we have superintendent and board member comments. Dr. Dennis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Few dates, December. As far as main educational events, we have Computer Science Education Week, which is this week, the 1st through the 7th. And today is Special Education Day and, not just Special Education Day, but also the 50th anniversary of the signing of IDEA, the Individual with Disabilities Education Act. We'll have EOC testing on the week of the 15th. And of course, after that subsequently is winter break and Christmas and, and all those days. And the last thing I have is Beverly and I will be presenting at NC Papa on 1210. And we're going to be presenting on the Alabama High School Turnaround. That's all I have.
Where are you presenting that?
Oh, the NC Papa, it is in Pinehurst.
Pinehurst?
Yes.
Will you send us some more information?
I will definitely send you some information. Yes, ma'am. We just finalized everything today and got it in for our presentation.
Okay, that sounds awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Poplin.
Yes. Well, Dr. Dennis stole a little bit of my thunder because I was going to say it's National Special Education Day. And as a board member, that day holds a special place in my heart because I have a son who's in the special education realm in Stanley County Schools. But I wanted to touch just a little bit on the balloons over Broadway balloon parade that I was able to attend at Stanfield. And I want to thank Dr. Merritt and her staff and all the teachers in those EC classes and in those kindergarten classes that made that happen to allow those kids to buddy up and pair up for that balloon parade. It warmed a special place in my heart and I was shocked at the number of parents that were there for that balloon parade. There were probably 100 parents there, grandparents, parents, family members. But it was, it was just really nice to see prior to Thanksgiving break and the kids were having a good time and enjoying it. And all surrounding a book, but just a fun time for everybody. And so I just wanted to kind of highlight that, especially on today being National Special Education Day. And then as always, congratulations to those that received awards tonight. And I ran cross country in high school, but I never turned any, any times in like the young lady that was here tonight. I think the fastest I ever got a regional meet was about 22 something, about 22 and a half minutes, I don't know. But as a freshman, that's impressive, so congratulations to her. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. Ms. Watson?
Well, I was going to say the same thing. Kennedy, I really applaud her because you have to have that dedication and athletes to do what she did. I have a granddaughter that swims and she's got that dedication, so we'll see where she goes. I hope everyone has a Merry Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. Mr. Sorenson?
I'll start out my comments, I'm going to sing a song in a minute, but I'll start out my comments. Calling out Mr. Robin Whitaker, I saw what you did at the Aquadale Cafeteria. We'd gone and visited the South Stanley District Schools and this adorable little girl walks up to her and tugs on her. Needed a boot tie, is what it was, a bootlace tie. And it touched my heart, see, Ms. Whitaker just gets down on her knees and ties that little girl. You made that little girl today and he's, well, you made mine too, so I'm ratting you out for that, you know. You've been warned. All right, the good Lord blessed me with a face for radio. Sadly, I didn't get the voice to match, so you'll have to bear with me as I share some season greetings in song. Sorry, there's no music accompanying it because it's copyrighted. You know Glenda and Dustin and Watson and Robin, Almond and Poplin, Plummer and Hedrick Poppin'. But do you recall the most famous boar deer of all? Sorenson, the bald headed boar deer, had a very shiny dome. And if you ever saw it, you would think it's made of chrome. I loved the other boar deer, used to laugh and call him names. They never let poor bald deer join in any boar dot games. Then one foggy Christmas Eve, Dr. Dennis came to say, "Bald deer with your dome so bright, won't you guide our schools tonight?" Then how the boar deer loved him as they shouted out with glee. Sorenson, the bald headed boar deer, you'll go down in history. Where your hell went was is a mystery. So Merry Christmas to you guys, that's the best I can do.
How can we top that? I mean, you know, how can we top that? That was awesome. I'm going to expect a song every meeting, so start working now, okay? Every meeting. Next, let's see, who am I calling? Mr. List. Do you have a song?
I don't know how I even follow that. I don't know, I'm like bald deer number two, I guess. No, Merry Christmas to everyone. No additional comment.
Thank you, Mr. List. Ms. Whitaker?
I wanted to just, I did have written down that I was going to talk about the needs based grant. I know Ms. Lear asked about it and I know most of you probably saw on the news, our county was not fortunate enough to be awarded any of the grants. I did want to just say that some information that we had written down from the conference that we went to. There were 92 applications for those grants, 48 counties applied. There was only $399 million worth of grants to give away. But the 92 applications that they received equaled $2 billion. So only 20% was, was able to be covered for those grant applications. Were we disappointed? We were very disappointed. But we'll go back to the drawing board and we'll apply for those grants again next year. And we're just going to continue to pray that our numbers will come up, so. Next, I put at each of your seats a letter. If you'll, if each of you will just kind of look at that, Lonnie Chandler, who used to serve on this board, actually sent this to me and asked me if I would share it with the board. But actually, what they're doing is 50 years ago, the 1976 North Stanley High School Women's Basketball Team won the championship. And at that point in time, they did not have the funds in order to get those girls championship rings. So they actually have started a fundraiser to do that. All the information, if you decide you want to contribute to that, is on that email. But I did just tell him that I would share that with the board. And lastly, I just want to say that this past year has been an experience. I'd never chaired the board before, it was not anything that I had ever really wanted to do. But I'm glad that I did do that, it's a good experience. And so I urge any board members, if you have an opportunity to chair the board, it really gives you a different perspective of things. I feel like we had a good year, I feel like we made some progress, we moved forward. But I am looking forward to kind of stepping down and moving into the role of Vice Chair. And I'm excited to be able to serve under Ms. Gibson. And I just want to thank her for her willingness to lead the board again. I know she's chaired the board in the past, so Ms. Gibson, I appreciate your work that you're going to do this coming year. You know, our county, we have to continue to move forward. We can't afford to be stagnant, and I use that word a lot. Our students deserve better. Our county deserves better. We're far behind where we should be and adequate funding is critical for this school system to move forward. As, I feel like as we're going into a new election cycle, I just encourage the community to think carefully about who you put in the seats that hold the purse strings because those are the county commissioners, not this school board. So I encourage you to think long and hard when you, when you vote on those that will be running for those seats. My commitment's going to remain the same. It's going to be to push this board forward, to stay behind us and for us to keep moving. We need the funds, we will find a way to do what we need to do. And I just appreciate this board and the year that, that we've had. And I just look forward to another year. Thank you much.
Thank you. Ms. Almond?
Yeah, I'm going to piggyback off of the, talking about the needs based grant and just the, the finance end of our, of our school. I looked it up, Google, it's amazing. 18 North Carolina counties changed places in 2026, so Stanley County is getting ready to be on Tier 3 for 2026. That's concerning because if I remember correctly from The Architect, not many Tier 3 counties get grants. And so that's concerning. And moving into this next year, as a board member, I want to make sure that I do a better job. You know, I got my feet wet this past year, but I want to do a better job that we are managing our, our funds to where, you know, like what Mr. Dutton was talking about earlier, you know, we don't have a budget. I hope as a board, we can make sound decisions when we're in that position. And we're not throwing money into something that, you know, we don't know what the future looks like. So I hope we're spending money where money should be going. We're not fluffing up central office. We're putting money to teachers, we're putting money to our bus drivers, getting bus drivers the help that they need on the bus. I hope as a board, we really move forward in looking at that. Because if, if we're truly going to be a Tier 3 county, we're going to have to really buckle down and make sure that we're spending money properly to be able to fix our facilities. Like I would love to fix our facilities and to get everybody the pay raises that they, they do deserve in a amount of time that is good for them, but also to where we are not throwing ourselves under the bus by spending so much money in one spot. So Merry Christmas on that note. And I'm looking forward to a new year, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Almond. I know that I was able to attend the balloon parade at Stanfield with Ms. Poplin, that was amazing. It truly was and just seeing the happy children and then the children of how they interacted together. From our exceptional children to our regular ed children, our teachers. That was just well, well planned and well, well attended. I also, along with some board members here, had the opportunity just a couple of weeks ago to attend the school board, North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference in Greensboro. And I even, I told Ms. Poplin in standing, talking with her, that I've been on this board, well, 12 years? Nine, nine, nine years. Going on 10, I guess. And that was the best. That was the best conference that I have ever attended. So some of you have attended some and, you know, and I know you had various feelings, I suppose. But the conferences were meaningful. I came away with lots of knowledge. And you have the breakout sessions and the breakout sessions, no matter which one you went to, were filled with information. And it was just a great, great conference, a great way to connect, network with other boards. And I look forward to some of that networking during this coming year. I just want to say it's a great honor to be nominated, elected to serve as your board chair for the coming year. I'm humbled and I appreciate your confidence in me. Congratulations, Ms. Whitaker, for being elected Vice Chair. To everybody that's on this board, I look forward to working with you. And I know you work hard and I thank you for your dedication and your commitment to ensuring the best educational outcomes that we can possibly have for our students in Stanley County Schools. Because that is what it's all about, it is for our students. Kind of reminds me of something our preacher gave us this last Sunday. He, he gave us a challenge. Which basically, basically was to surround ourselves, to surround oneself with positivity. And let, always let others see Jesus in you. Let, let them see Jesus in your actions and in your words. So, challenge accepted. I, I can ditto what all of you have said about those recognized tonight. I truly want to thank our teachers, our administrators, our staff, our students, our county office, directors, everyone, our SRO officers, from our bus drivers and our, all of our classified staff, every single person that helps to make up Stanley County Schools. You are so greatly appreciated and I do think we have a wonderful school system. And we want to continue that and we want to continue to make Stanley County Schools the best that they can possibly be. So on that note from me, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I promise I will not sing. The next board meeting, the date and time will be Tuesday, January the 6th, 2026, at 6:15 p.m. in the Jean McIntyre Meeting Room. And also, board members, I think you were able to see Hope sent out to you your updated 2026 invocations and, and meeting schedule as far as our board meetings. So I think that we have covered everything and we are at the part to adjourn. So I will now entertain a motion to adjourn December 2nd, 2025 regular board meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
That was from everybody, Hope. A second. That was from everyone too. All in favor say aye. Oppose no. We are now adjourned. Safe travels, have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.